Anybody else? Can we also real quick, close to each sound, cell phones? That will be my, oh, one, two, three, this one. I appreciate it, thank you. It was a thank you very much.
We don't need them, we are spread.
Did I go, you say?
So we got three minutes.
Yeah, this is.
Go down, go down, long road, important distribution.
Good morning, one, one more last night, you would make yourself all about things. Does anything you got wrong the rules?
I'm glad you reminded this, because I forgot to do mine. Yes, one minute.
Where's yours? Where's your computer?
I took it off, so I can see everybody. I didn't want to be hiding behind it, like it usually happens, so. In the other rooms. All right, would you please rise? I'm going to ask. Commissioner Melton to lead us in our opening prayer.
Let's pray. Our most holy God, Father, we. We lift you up this morning and give you praise, honor, and glory, Father, you bless us every day, and we thank you for it. Father, be with the court this morning as we make decisions for the. Citizens of this county, Father, and pray that we. We make the best decisions for all citizens that are represented in this county. Father, we also want to. Bless our. Men and women who served in the military this morning, Father, especially those that are in harm's way, be with them. Father, just continue to lead and guide and direct us, we thank you for Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, for it, in his name we pray, amen.
Amen, all right, place to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America. And to the republic which stands. Texas flag, honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas. One state under God, one opinion.
Thank you, may they see it? All right, I would like to call this meeting to order, announce that we do have a forum, all the commissioners are present, and it is nine oh one AM. Are there any general announcements? Okay, if not.
I've got a general comment.
Okay.
The pledges of those flags were fantastic with the. The participation of the audience, I appreciate that.
All right, and the others? All right, item number three, public comments on agenda items. And who has the sign up sheets, how many do we have?
We have three.
We have three, okay, yeah, each person is allowed five minutes to speak. And you want to announce?
So the first. Five, one, five, one.
Yes.
Okay, so the first one will be mine, Collins.
Okay.
If you will step up to the podium, please.
We're on number three.
I know what numbers you call them.
Number sixteen.
Number sixteen.
Well, thank you for listening to me this morning, I'm here about the voting. Equipment that you're. Consider, and just want to encourage you, and we're really. Excited the fact that we're going to keep our paper ballots, but the equipment really needs to be looked at, we had a very good meeting here. Last week or week before, with an individual, Russ Ramsland, who is an expert on. Voting machines and such, and has actually been witness at the Texas Capitol. At their committee, when they were talking, the voter machines and how voting is. Taken care of here in our state, he's also been an expert witness at the. National Capitol in Washington, so anyway, I just want to say and encourage. Everybody, and Susan, I think, is is up on it too, and everybody that attended that meeting. And I mailed you all out, to every one of your information that Mr. Ramsland had imparted on us with questions that were asked. And personally. I've witnessed how. Voting machines can skew. Elections, I've been part of a group of. At least twelve to twenty people that had been everywhere from Iowa to Wisconsin, to Georgia, to knock doors. For candidates, in particular, the last one was so devastating as far as we were concerned when we went to Georgia. To try to defeat Osip in Warnock. And give our US senators, those two Republicans. When we knocked on doors in Georgia. For that special election, it was so disheartening for the voters to look at it and say, I don't know why y'all came here. The election's already fixed, they knew who was going to win before the votes were ever counted. And it was so disappointing, and when you look at what's going on in this country. We really need to look at that equipment. Stay away from Dominion, please, so anyway, thanks for hearing me, I know there's a lot of people that are here because of that. Particular agenda item, and I appreciate the participation. I feel it's better to be proactive than reactive, and that's why we're here to voice our opinion. And I thank you for your consideration of. When you look at this voting, thank you.
Thank you.
Second will be Mr. Tom Duke.
Good morning, gentlemen, I don't want to detain us unnecessarily or repeat what Doc has already said. I simply rise in confirmation or affirmation of what he has said. I don't know what the commissioners have reviewed in regard to options. I don't pretend to be an expert in this area, but the little that I do know. Suggest to me that in regard to the use of computerized. Or electronic ballot counting or voting machines, there is a very grave risk of cheating. Anything that's computerized or electronic that can be hacked or preloaded with votes to determine in advance. The outcome of an election. Is is an issue that should be explored, I'm sure is being explored. By by the commissioners in examining all of the options open to this county, I understand there are concerns for both convenience. And for streamlining the election process, perhaps increasing the accuracy and the efficiency of. Ballot distributions in our county, because there are so many different kinds of ballots. And yet, in my mind. All of those considerations are greatly outweighed by the risk of a, an election being fraudulently. Determined by the use of these machines. And, you know, and it's not just, and I think Doc alluded to it. It's not simply that, that one election may be fraudulently determined. But it is the impact of the citizenry. Of of the appearance of corruption and the opinion that elections are not fair, and that one's vote does not count. That undermines the very foundation of this democracy, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
And the last one is Susan, is it Lynn?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
For letting me speak. I know where nears all acquaintance the two gentlemen who have gone before me, but. I I do agree with both men have said, and. My husband and I moved here from Washington State years ago. We saw there, when I first lived there, it was. Same day voting, voting with paper. But. The cheating started with doing recounts. A Republican won, but they kept recounting and finding votes. Until the Democrat won, and that was three or four recounts, after that, it was all manly and computerized, and. There was no way to stop the corruption. So I I'm just worried when I hear, you know. There might be a possibility of using voting machines, so. Because I've seen firsthand what happens, you can never stop the corruption once it starts. Thank you.
Thank you. I thank y'all for coming, and we'll address that when we get to item number sixteen, and I think you'll be happy with what we have to say, all right, the next items, number four. Through eight are technically consent agenda, in the future, we will call it consent agenda, and if there's nothing, what that means is. That we will vote on them as one item to approve. Unless there's something that we need to address on any one of them, then we pull it out of the consent agenda. But today, we're not doing that because it's not labeled as consent agenda, so. Item number four, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the amendments of the Commissioners Court and approve the same for March first. Two thousand twenty-three, I do have one minor correction. That needs to be made, and that is on when we went into open hearing. Nice. The open public hearing about the county subdivision, we opened it at nine eighteen, and then we closed at nine thirty-one. Then we reopened it at nine thirty-four because we couldn't keep. We continued to discuss it, so we reopened it at nine thirty-four and then closed at nine fifty-five. So that's the only correction that I see, did you lay up any other corrections? Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended? All right, is there a second?
Question.
Okay, so take your pick, or or Commissioner Milton or Commissioner Pearson, they did vote, okay. All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Motion passes, item number five, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. Is there any discussion on the bills submitted?
Kenny has a question.
Kenny?
I have one question on the bill. It's on the bill for the Human Society of Cedar Creek.
Yes, sir.
A March bill for six hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes, sir.
I want you to know, I've been told to pay this bill, I've been told not to pay this bill, back and forth. We haven't roused him, we have it on your, I need to know we're not paid it.
You did not pay that bill. The contract has expired December third.
Everybody since.
It is, it is confirmed to the DA. That the contract has expired.
What's on your, I will take it off.
Thank you, I I have addressed it with them and requested refund from the first two months, because they were continuing to send us a bill. For it, but they they have terminated, so, all right, any other questions about the? Bill payment, if not, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'm like a motion, we'll pay the bills with exception of one, Kenny just mentioned.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye, all opposed like sign. Motion passes, discuss and consider, item number six, discuss and consider ratifying the counting bills as submitted. Now, that was item number, yeah, ratify.
Yeah, right.
Ratifying is approving bills that were already paid. In that regard.
Second.
I would prefer it. Commissioner, I've had a motion to approve it, Commissioner Melton, second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Motion passes, item number seven, discuss and consider approval of the twenty twenty-three budget amendments. Is there any discussion? If not, is there a motion to approve the budget amendments for twenty twenty-three?
So.
I'll say it.
All right, motion has been made, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Motion passes, item number eight, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by the various offices and departments of the county government approved. Entry of the same in the court's minutes, we have received ten this month, so far this month of nineteen. So is there any discussion? Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the reports as were submitted?
So.
All right, motion has been made, and second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye, all opposed like time.
Was second Chad.
Yes. All right. Item number nine, discuss and consider the Van Zandt County Geological Society annual report for twenty twenty-two.
Morning.
That was us. Carrie?
Carrie Wolverton.
Wolverton, okay.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm Carrie Wolverton, and I am president of the Van Zandt County Genealogy and Society, and manager of the Van Zandt County Library of Genealogy and Local History. And so with that position, I'm very pleased to be here today to bring you our report for twenty twenty-two. Our genealogy library is under the direction of the county library. It is operated and maintained by members of the Van Zandt County Genealogical Society. Since nineteen eighty-eight, the genealogical society has been responsible for completely funding. Staffing and maintaining the genealogy library. All of the librarians are volunteers. In November of nineteen eighty-eight, Van Zandt County Judge Truitt Mayo granted us permission to, for the genealogy society. To park cars and collect the fees on first Monday Saturday in a lot inside our building. Money raised from the volunteers parking cars is our primary source of income. Money earned from parking cars, together with the sales of books authored and published by the genealogical society. Keeps the genealogy library self-sufficient and self-maintaining. We do not receive funds from the Van Zandt County or the city of Canton to operate the genealogy library. And we want to say that we so much appreciate you all providing us space in the courthouse annex. For our library, we we love the space, and we we just want to extend our heartfelt thank you to you all letting us have our library there. We have a couple of things I'd like to mention, and that is that nine volunteer librarians worked four thousand one hundred and thirty-six hours. Maintaining the genealogy library in twenty twenty-two. The parking crew worked eleven hundred and eighty-nine hours parking on first Sunday weekend. Librarians worked eighteen hundred and eighty-seven hours on special projects. The quarterly editors worked one hundred and ninety-three hours compiling our heritage. Two hundred and six out-of-county patrons visited the genealogy library for research. Eight hundred and sixty-three in-county patrons visited the genealogy library for research. Thirty-seven out-of-state patrons also visited our library. Our educational programs are offered in person via Zoom and on Facebook Live. We've added some important things to the library this year. We like to keep all of our equipment up to date, and we have, we offer a lot of subscriptions to things. On the internet that our patrons are allowed to utilize for free. Our total expenditures for twenty twenty-two, which included repairs, utilities, equipment, maintenance, research, materials, subscriptions, computers, and purchase of books. Was eighteen thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. Our membership at the end of twenty-two was two hundred and twenty-three members. And at this time, when I, as I present this report to you, I ask that the county commissioners approve it.
Thank you. Very much, are there any questions for Carrie? Is there a motion to approve the genealogical society report, annual report? Oh, right. All right, is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, motion has been made, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Motion carries. Okay, item number ten, discuss and consider approval and issuance of a proclamation recognizing March twenty-fifth as citizens of the Republic. Of Texas, Texas Elvira. EngleDow Day, did I spell it, say it right?
Elvira EngleDow.
EngleDow, all right.
We love Elvira.
Would you like to read the resolution?
Can I say a couple of things about her first?
Yes, you may.
Elvira EngleDow was moved to Texas during the Republic of Texas. And she came to our county, she's an early settler of the Free State of Van Zandt. She was a citizen of the Republic of Texas, and she is also a known daughter of the War of eighteen twelve, and what that means is. That her father started in the War of eighteen twelve. Elvira was born in eighteen twelve, so daddy wasn't always away at the war, he was home a little bit. And and so she came here, she lost her husband in the Texas Revolution. She lost her son in the Civil War. And she raised not only her children on this pioneer territory, she raised her grandchildren. She was a woman of incredible fortitude, and she is buried in the Hillcrest Cemetery, and we want to honor her. As an early citizen, and may I read the proclamation?
Yes, you may.
All right. Whereas Elvira Elizabeth Randolph EngleDow was born in Warren County, Tennessee, on the twenty-eighth of February eighteen twelve. The daughter of an American Revolutionary War veteran, Henry Randolph, and Sarah Nancy Cole. And whereas Elvira married Texas Revolutionary War veteran Creed S. EngleDow. And whereas Elvira moved to Dutchess County in the Republic of Texas in eighteen thirty-five. And whereas Elvira received the Veteran Land Certificate, established her homestead, and settled here in Van Zandt County. And whereas Elvira made significant and honorable contributions to the welfare and citizenry of Van Zandt County. Whereas Elvira died on the first of June eighteen ninety-six at the age of eighty-four. She's buried in the Hillcrest Cemetery in Canton, where she lies at internal rest. And whereas numerous descendants of Elvira EngleDow continue to live in Van Zandt County and surrounding areas.
Okay, thank you very much, is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So move, Pearson.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion has been made, second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, all opposed like sign. Motion carries, all right, motion carries.
Carrie.
Very good, so we will do pictures after we do the second, the second, okay. So moving on to item number eleven.
Well, okay, so in case everybody doesn't realize, in Van Zandt County.
Let me read what item number eleven is, discuss, consider the approval and issuance of a proclamation recognizing March twenty-fifth. Two thousand twenty-three is the hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary of Van Zandt County Day. All right, now Carrie.
Oh, now me?
Yes.
Van Zandt County turned one hundred and seventy-five years old this month. And it's, it's, not only is it a wonderful milestone for us, we want, we want to remember where we've been. Because this county is fantastic, it's a wonderful place to live, we're blessed with awesome county commissioners. We, we, we're, we have, a lot of people in the world don't have, and we also have the resources to be successful here, and so we want to celebrate. All of Van Zandt County on March the twenty-fifth at two o'clock. At the Blackwell House, we invite everyone to come and celebrate with us our hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary. And we hope you'll come, there'll be tours of the Blackwell House, for anyone who's interested, and we'll have some speakers there. And then we'll also be serving refreshments, so if you want a cake, if you want sandwiches, please come. Do you want me to read the?
Would you play?
Whereas Henderson County was created out of Nakadotus municipality. And whereas the Free State of Van Zandt, established death-free, was created in March of eighteen forty-eight by the legislature of the state of Texas. Out of what was part of Henderson County. Whereas the Neches River rises in eastern Van Zandt County, the Sabine River. Forms part of the northeastern county line, and creeks in the eastern portion of the county are part of the Trinity River watershed. And whereas the eastern part of the county is in post oak savanna vegetation area, with tall grasses and posts and blackjack oak trees. The western part of the county is the black land prairies vegetation. Region with tall grasses, mesquite, oak, pecan, and elm trees along the streams. And whereas artifacts from the paleo Indian culture suggest. That Van Zandt County has been occupied continuously for more than ten thousand years. Pioneers came here from the Old Mountain, Tennessee, Alabama, Europe, and Norway, seeking a home in which to settle and prosper. And whereas salt mines, mills, farming, corn, chicken, turkey, cattle, hogs, cotton, dairy, hay, and sweet potatoes. Are the leading agriculture bounty of our county. And whereas Van Zandt County, rich with hunting, fishing, and hiking opportunities for visitors and residents, is currently death-proof in twenty twenty-three.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve this proclamation?
Remove.
All right, second, all right, do you get that? All right, all, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye, all opposed like sign. Motion carries. All right. Oh, yeah, let's do a picture real quick. I'll go down once, yes.
You get everybody? We've got it, buddy.
We've got everybody.
We can Photoshop something in on there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. See you, March the twenty-fifth.
Okay, item number twelve um, has to do with a, a resolution authorizing the supplemental of the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four uh, Texas Community Development Block Grant application to the Texas Department of Agriculture uh, committing matching funds, agreeing to comply with uh, programmatic requirements in adopting re-affilling, reaffirming civil rights policies. I would like to table or withdraw this right now because I did not receive this request until late last week and it has a number of um, things that it says we are agree to comply with that I have no idea exactly what they are and I need to research them to make sure that we are in fact complying with them. So uh, that has to do with uh, the items on concern citizens' participation plan and grievance procedure, the excessive force policy, fair housing policy, section five oh four policy grievous procedure, code of conduct policy. I have to, we need to research that to make sure that our county is, is abiding by those. So I'm not, we're not, uh, if it's agreeable with the commissioners to table it for now until we research that, then uh, I will withdraw that for not now.
Was that your motion to type?
Uh, yes, motion to table for right now.
Second, Pearson.
Okay. Alright, uh, any further discussion? Alls in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. We'll get to, okay. Alright, item number thirteen, discuss and take possible action to approve the resolution designated author, authorized representatives in matters pertaining to the county's participation in the Texas Community Block Grant Program. Alright, you have?
Hi, I'm Caitlin Brown with Trailer and Associates and I'm here as a representative for Little Hope More Water Supply.
Okay.
And I'm just here to answer any questions that any of the commissioners or judge might have about this program for items twelve, thirteen, and.
Okay, alright, so we're gonna pass on that, but uh, uh, thirteen and to explain to those of you that uh, are, are not aware, the rural water supply companies have to go through the county in order to get funding. Uh, the county does not fund it, but the grant process is managed by the counties. And that's what the, what we have to do is we have to go through and approve what each, each uh, item that they do to apply for the grant and then to get the grant manager and then to get the engineer that's going to be designing it and then to improve the uh, construction process. So that comes to us for approval and you're the engineering company that's designing it, correct?
You're the grant administration.
The grant administration, correct. Okay. So it's, it's uh, uh, we do pay for it, but the money comes back to us uh, through the, the grant program. So, uh, and it's, is up to five hundred thousand, actually uh, five hundred thousand dollars and uh, that is awarded for this uh, project.
That is correct. And there is a ten thousand dollar local match, uh, but that is paid for by a Little Hope More Water Supply Corporation. And that is what um, item fourteen addresses, is that memorandum of understanding
Okay.
The county and Little Hope More.
Alright. So is there a motion to uh, approve the resolution uh, representing the matters pertaining to the county's participation in the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program? Is there a motion to approve?
So move, Pearson.
Is there a second?
There.
Alright, motion is made, second. Are there any um, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Alright, and then item number fourteen is the uh, discuss and take possible action on the memorandum of understanding between the county and Little Hope More Waters uh, Supply Company for the administration of the twenty-three, twenty-four uh, Texas Community Block Grant project if awarded. Okay? So we just discussed all that. Is there a motion to uh, approve the memorandum of understanding? A motion. Okay, motion made, second.
There.
Alright, motion is made, second. Alls in, uh, any further discussion? Not, uh, all of the favors say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Alright, item number fifteen, discuss and uh, consider appointment of liaisons of Van Sant County Departments. That's your item?
Yes, Commissioner, as you know, we've had this liaison program for many years. And what it is, is uh, commissioner, but uh, our liaison, the, the other elected officials and officers in case uh, they have some problems and would like to come and talk to uh, to commissioners uh, before they put it on the court's agenda, they have an opportunity to that. So if there is problems and uh, sometimes these prob, problems are workable, we can work them out before it actually gets to the commissioners' court and we can solve them. Well, that's what this is all about. It's not that the, we're, absolutely, we're not over any elected official or uh, anything like that. Uh, they run their own office, but it, it simply a liaison uh, for the other elected officials or department heads to come to to the commissioners and, and talk about their problems before it ever comes to the commissioners' court. And I, I normally assign these positions that they're talking to the other commissioners and officers that you did. So I leave it with any discussion. Uh, then I make a motion that we uh, we appoint the liaison committee uh, for the Van Sant County Departments.
I'll send it. Alright, motion is made, and second, is there any further discussion?
I, I, I'm hundred percent for this. Mr. Milton, I would like to see us move to a, a system on the uh, uh, not on the elected officials, the elected officials should have just what you have, but our supervisors uh, department heads that do not have the supervisor, I'd like to see it moved to a system where the county judge, where they report to the county judge uh, for uh, just a better way of operation. Uh, there's been issues in the past where, where nobody could address the problem and if if they reported right straight to one person, then the people would have one person to go to to try to issue uh, work out some of their issues. But for, that's a, that's a discussion later on, but I wish, I wish we would consider that in, in the future.
And I think that, that I appointed the judge on all the major positions that he wanted to be on. So basically, you know, they come to him, he, he can give the okay, but yeah, I see what you're talking about.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Not, uh, we have, yeah, we have much, uh, alls in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number sixteen, discuss, consider all options for election equipment. Do you want to lead off, or would you like?
Uh, let me just start, uh, I guess, uh, you know, this was my agenda, I, and I pledged it on air to discuss different election equipment that have uh, paper ballots only. And there's two major companies in this area that provide that kind of uh, equipment and that's E, S and S, and Hark companies. And they provide machines that have paper ballots so that we can track voting. And that's, uh, I wanted to get with our county clerk, uh, actually, I wanted this to be in a workshop, but it got on this agenda. So uh, uh, would, wanted to get with our county clerk, Ms. Strickland and uh, and the other uh, liaison commissioners on this and just to discuss getting these uh, companies up here to demonstrate their product. So we can look at them and see how the paper ballot works. And uh, that, that was basically what it was all about. I guess it turned out to be more than that, but I'm sorry, what did you say? Yeah, yeah, and, and the, I, I hear you loud and clear. And uh, I, I think that I can speak for the whole commission board. We have no intention of ever going with anything without a paper ballot system. So if not, commissioners can speak up, uh, and the judge can speak up, but that's my take on it, Judge, and I'm that, that's why I, I put it on the ballot, so we could get things started. We need, we need new election equipment. And uh, we've got the money for it. So uh, that's the reason I put it on the board.
Thank you. We don't, uh, if, this is not uh, interactive discussion. This is discussion between the commissioners. I, I want to give you some, uh, provide you some background, okay? We, we have already budgeted close to a million dollars in uh, this year, this fiscal year for new election equipment. For those who aren't aware, our election equipment is vintage nineteen ninety, mid nineties, okay? And it is uh, it is ninety, it is not uh, it is in need of replacement because it is woefully uh, uh, we have a lot of broken equipment and it's, it's uh, it needs to be replaced for that very reason alone because of the age of it and that it's uh, ESS has been uh, very supportive of us. They've been loaning us stuff uh, for equipment that we can't, we can't be repaired and they've been loaning us replacement equipment to do that, but it's uh, on agenda to get it done. Uh, we, we uh, uh, the intent is that uh, we will have a workshop, uh, Virgil just kind of moved it up on, on the agenda. Uh, we will schedule a workshop, most likely it'll be in the evening and, and it will last as long as you can. The advantage to a workshop as opposed to the commissioners' court is we can't have dialogue. Okay, we have dialogue within ourselves and you have dialogue coming up to us through the comments, but we can't have dialogue. In a workshop, there's no uh, there's nothing voted on or decided there, we just discuss. And that's where we'll sit down, we'll get all the players involved and we need a little bit more time to prepare because we have not actually prepared uh, 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 for a uh, bid for the equipment. And one of the things that I hope that we can do that uh, and, and Commissioner Pratt was instrumental in this process when we did the radio system. We tried, we tried bidding radio system on our own. And it's too technical. There, there was too much stuff and we really didn't know. And so we went back and we hired a firm that is, uh, well, actually, we, we went up on RFP to get firms to bid on preparing an RFP for our radio system. In other words, helping us design or telling us what it would be the best system to design. Uh, and then putting out an RFP for that radio system and then having the manufacturers come to us with their presentation knowing that the consulting firm that we were using was looking out for our best interest in how it was being designed and what was the probably the best. And uh, that was incredibly beneficial to us. Would you say, Chad?
And on that way, it doesn't count, it's hundreds, hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And they actually helped us score the RFPs when they came in to make the decision on which vendor to select in that regard. So I'm hoping that we can come to that, do that same process for our voting machines is to get someone because uh, there's several things that I've talked about that would be uh, uh, that are going, if they're not available now, they will be uh, in the future is a thing called countywide voting. And that is where you would be able to vote anywhere in the county. You don't have to go to your specific precinct location. You can go to any voting location in the county. And uh, that, if, if we were able to do that, then there's technical reasons why uh, that we have to deal with. And that's where this consulting firm can help design the RFP to address those things. But by doing that, uh, we would not have to have eighteen precinct locations. We would not have to have eighteen locations for voting machines. It would be, it'd be probably uh, eleven, probably eleven or so. And, and that saves us money because we don't need the equipment for nine, nine stations and it's not that much further for people to go and they can go anywhere in the county to vote uh, in that process. And then the other thing that uh, uh, talked about the paper ballots and that, and what the current technology uh, provides and Coffin County is using it right now is that you don't pre-print the ballots and have to uh, maintain them all. At the last election, we had forty-three different ballots that we had to maintain, had to hand out for the uh, uh, at early voting. They had to maintain all those ballots. Uh, when I was election judge in Martin Smith, you have Brownsboro, you have Athens ISD and uh, then you have Martin Smith ISD. So there's three to four ballots and you had to make sure you got to write one out. With ballot on demand, in other words, you come in, you use the poll pad, you check in and then that sends the uh, ballot to the printer. Your ballot for your precinct and for your ISD is printed right then and there on site. Okay, that saves us thousands and thousands of dollars in printing costs i- in that regard. So uh, what, what I intend to do, those are some of the technologies that are currently available and I know there's concerns about the security. And what I intend to do is the first, first thing we'll do is a, is a town, is not a town hall, but a, a workshop. And, and we'll do it in the evening so it can last as long as y'all want information. And what I hope to do is actually have one of those machines from ESS and possibly Hark there at site. So you can see a demo of how it works, okay? We can do that before we even go to the RFP process in that regard. So that is the intent that, that the commissioners' court has to, we don't have any information right now about equipment because we haven't even submit, requested or put a RFP out to uh, for them to submit something to us at this, at the current time. But we will keep you involved and we will form a committee that will be involved in this election process uh, that will include the most likely, and definitely will include the county chairs uh, for the Republican Party and Democrat Party because they, they have an interest in it too, so. And uh, in that regard. So uh, we don't have the answers to you today about what it is we're going to do, but I have outlined the process that we hope to go through. And after that, after we have that uh, workshop, then we will work on finding a consultant that can look at the equipment for us or that can help us put together an RFP that will address not only what our needs are, but security issues in that regard, so. Uh, that's where, is, is there any other discussion from the commissioners?
I just, I pledge that we won't do anything without hearing from the others. Yeah, we'll do this together.
And, and for your information, the state of Texas passed Senate Bill uh, five ninety-eight in June of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, it was signed into law, or actually it's signed into law by the governor in June uh, two thousand twenty-one, went into effect on September first, two thousand twenty-one that states all elections will be held with paper ballots and require paper audit trail. Okay, so we're required, we're required by the state to have paper ballots. So uh, you know, that, that's confirmation that we will have paper ballots. Then the question is, you know, uh, uh, the paper on demand versus the printing in, in advance and that's the part, so. That's the conversation. But I look forward to the workshop and I hope we have as many people, we'll, we'll do it offsite so we can uh, uh, get as many people that want to come about it and uh, talk about it.
And at that workshop, it won't, anybody that wants to speak out at any time and talk and
That's right.
in the situation that we're in today.
Yeah, it's interactive, it's interactive, so.
You know, I'd sign up to talk, something, something comes to your mind, we'll, we'll discuss it then.
Okay. Any further discussion? There's something to vote on here. Uh, Susan, do you have any comments?
No.
Or updates?
It stands.
Okay, alright.
I just want to play. Our current system of paper ballot basis, it's got the proper, the tracking system that is already paid. And moving forward, uh, the goal we have, while we have to modernize our equipment just due to our stuff is so old, you can't get replaced. We've got to modernize, we don't have it yet. But our goal is to try to keep it as close in line with ours as we can, wants to make it better for the people. The ability to print the ballot at the location is the printer, not just great, just a printer. We'll save us a lot of money. We'll save us a lot of money, because we don't have the pre-order ballots, or the stockpile ballots. We don't have ways that we order too many. We won't get a Bible recorder and we'll be able to print them right there. That's one way to be efficient. Another thing, another bill for you to sign in and recognize where you're voting, pretty simply is what ballot you need. We'll make it easier on the people, that they'll be able to go vote as convenient to them as possible. And that's the goal we're working for, is to keep secure, just what we got as we modernize it all.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comment? Alright, item number seventeen, discuss, consider approving appointments to Texas A and M AgriLife Extension Service. We did this at last month, our last commissioner court meeting, we approved the the new employees, but we failed to put their start dates on there when it was effective. And so this, this resolution here will it it gives the start dates when they started working for the county in the AgriLife Extension. So I just, I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution to include the start dates for Amy Smith, Shively, and for Allison Morrow.
Go ahead.
Alright. Is there a second?
You need to read the dates?
The dates are effective, Amy Smith, Shively is on two, two, two twenty, twenty twenty-three, and Allison Morrow is effective three, one, twenty twenty-three. Okay. So, alright, motion is made. Second, is there any further discussion? Not all of them favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Alright, item number eighteen, discuss and consider the annual license renewal for Juan C. Garcia and Divinia Rodriguez, DBA Smart Choice Enterprise, Inc. of thirty-nine oh nine McKinnon Drive, Dallas, Texas, to operate an automotive wrecking and salvage yard located on twelve eight forty-eight Interstate twenty, Canton, Benzette County, Texas. Okay, who's, who submitted this?
They did, they did.
Oh, they did, okay. Was this capital recycling, recycling?
No.
He has been doing this for years. He was doing that when I was working for the commissioners, and he's actually the only one, I think, who does it currently.
Yeah, thirteen, fourteen years, he's the only one that does it accurately.
He's off at twenty, I think probably Colfax area is where it's at.
Alright, okay, I know which one it is now.
Passes, if it passes, then he will go after everything is signed off, and he actually comes in and pays a fee to my office of twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
And he does this every year.
Okay.
As every wrecking yard, automobile wrecking yard should, and he's the only one that does.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion, we renew this license.
Alright, motion has been made. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor, if not, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Okay. So, item number nineteen, discuss, consider county judge signature on a prorated tobacco settlement distribution, county expenditure statement, and hospital expenditure statement for calendar year twenty twenty-two. Alright. You may proceed.
Morning, Judge.
Morning, Commissioner.
This is an annual statement that we have provided to the state comptroller's office. It includes the indigent healthcare coordinator's salary. It includes all medical expenses that the county has incurred for indigent healthcare and all the healthcare expenditures at the J. So our total expenditures for the year for those categories were five hundred and eleven thousand dollars and seventy-three cents. Don't get too excited, for last year's, last year's, once they went through the, once we submitted the expenditure, we received ten thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars for the rebate. So we'll get approximately ten thousand dollars back to the state comptroller's office. We just have to file this report with the court to get your approval for Judge Reese to sign the report.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Pratt, second by Commissioner Milton. Is there any further discussion?
This, this money is distributed over two hundred and fifty-four counties.
Yes.
So, we're, we're lucky to get a little down over here.
It was actually a suit that Attorney General Dan Morales had in nineteen ninety-six, so. All counties submit their expenditures, and then it's kind of, the money that is in the trust fund down there is based on your, your rebate, to say, is based on your expenditure, county expenditure.
Correct. And and just so you all understand, we spent on indigent healthcare, and that is citizens in our county who are unable to afford medical services, and they qualify for it. We have spent two hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars of the Benzette County taxpayers' money. And this is required for us to spend by the state, okay? We have also spent two hundred and ninety-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars for healthcare services for incarcerated population. That would be our jail. And this is money that the state, that Benzette County taxpayers are paying to, for the inmates in our jail. And this is for one year, for one year, so the total was over five hundred thousand dollars. So, and we will get ten thousand dollars back from this, so, so. Alright, motion, any further discussion?
Yes, this is what you call unfunded mandates. I want y'all to understand that. Unfunded mandates, Austin, tell them that's what we're doing.
Alright. All's in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number twenty, discuss, consider the Rio Sunshine Edition Platte located in Benzette County Road thirty-four seventeen in Precinct Three.
I would be like to live in that subdivision, Rio Sunshine, two lot subdivision, and all by this way on, off Highway sixty-four towards Canton, now Will's Point, on County Road thirty-four seventeen. Roughly two point, twenty-two and a quarter acre and two and a half acre. They already own it, they're dividing it in half. It would be two acres, I mean, two lots, one lot will be one point one six nine acres, and another one be one point one four six. The front on the county road, they've met all the requirements. I might motion approve this plating for filing purposes only.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second?
Certainly.
Commissioner Milton, any further discussion? If not, all's in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider thirty day, over thirty day travel reimbursement for Precinct Three Collection Station.
Yes, sir. I made a mistake. I did not realize that was in our policy that for travel reimbursement, there was a thirty day limit on, and actually, when I read it, there's a forty-five day limit, but I'm still out of compliance. What I did, or what I asked to do, starting January the first, the collection station attendant, I've never liked the way we handle the money from the collection station. Y'all don't know, collection stations are places where you can carry your trash, and we operate a little nonprofit deal there to give the citizens a place to carry their trash, and we charge, we pay for dumpsters. Anyway, I've never liked the way we handle the money that the collection attendant takes in. He, he collects his money and he sees my truck sitting out there, so he sticks in the door of the truck, or he sees the foreman or one of the employees is here, give this to the to Pearson to turn in. So what I asked him to start doing on January the first is for him to take total responsibility of that money. It stays in his possession all the time. And when he was bringing it to us, he might bring it, I might bring it to Kenny and turn it in, maybe a dollar, maybe a dollar under, or the next month, two dollars over. Just a human error mistake, and then between me and Kenny's employees, we had to sign off on it and everything, so I wanted it to where that gentleman brings it here, turns it in straight into the treasury box. And and I told him to keep up with his mileage, and we were paying his mileage from the Will Point County Barn, Precinct Barn, over to the courthouse. He does it three times a month, roughly. So I've got his January and his February that are out of compliance, where the policy, forty-five dollars and something for each month. So I'm asking the court to give me permission to authorize Kenny to go back and pay January and February, and then from now on, since I'm aware of the policy, we'll, we'll stay within our forty-five days. That's a motion, in the form of a motion by Pearson.
Alright, are there motions or a second? Second. Alright, any further, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the over thirty day travel reimbursement? Say aye. Opposed, like sign. Alright, motion passes. Item number twenty-two, discuss, consider next action for filling facility management's position. That is, we have three applications for the position, and I, I'm ready to proceed with interviewing. I guess my question is, do I get to interview and hire, or do I need Commissioner Court approval, or how's that work, because I wasn't involved in the last?
Why don't you just have another commissioner review and interview and proceed to the court?
Okay, alright. That's what I'll do. We will do that. We will interview either this week or first part of next week.
What? Do we not have facility maintenance supervisor on our liaison list?
We've got it down there, but there's nobody assigned, don't yet. Should be on there.
There it is.
Or there's nobody appointed yet.
There is. It's me and Commissioner Pierce. We're on there.
And y'all two do the interviews, right?
Yeah, we can. Yes, alright, we'll move forward with that. Alright, item number twenty-three, discuss, consider purchase of a large plaque.
That doesn't need to be.
This, we should have a motion.
A motion and
Okay.
That's a consent on the court.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, what you just said.
Motion that you and I will proceed on with interviewing for the maintenance.
Make a motion, we close the, the application process and that we notify those three people and and you and I interview and bring that results back to the court for the court to make the final decision on who we are.
Alright, is that your, is that a motion? Alright, Commissioner Pearson has made the motion. Is there a second? Alright. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number twenty-three, discuss and consider a purchase of a large plaque scanner for the sum of one dollar from Ward County. And I believe that is, Susan.
Yes, that's mine. Okay, so we've had workshops about the subdivision plaque sizes of what everyone is bringing into our office for us to be able to scan it into the computer so that we can print it out if someone just needs a quick printout. I believe Commissioner Milton has been downstairs before where he's had to try to piece together, you know, subdivision plaques and stuff, and that is a nightmare. And so I was at a school, and a lady there, a clerk, actually has one that she's getting rid of. They've gone a different way. And so I just overheard her talking. I'm like, you know, what is it exactly? And so she gave me exactly, you know, the name of it, numbers and everything. So in your book, this morning, I actually gave y'all a little picture of exactly what it is, kind of like a little breakdown. And she said, data's unplugged it, it does have a computer with it and everything, so we'll have to, I'll have a manual and everything. My only concern is, I was telling Chad, is going to be the ink on it, because it does have color copy. So I haven't been able to locate how much that ink is going to be. There's ink in it now. Okay, so I just don't know. You know, is that, I'm thinking, we might buy ink once a year, I don't know. But just trying to figure out if we're going to do the color copying, or just Chad said that that's what we should do, is there's one print amount. And what we'll do is, we'll figure out the fee that we're going to be charging per customer, per page, to make sure that we cover that.
And it is working?
It is working.
Okay, and do we have a, know how we can get work done on it when it needs work?
Well, it's a cannon, so I figure we can probably call then. It's probably not going to be under warranty, but we'll have to find, I guess, the vendor or whoever, and try to figure out who works on it and stuff.
Okay. Alright. Is there a motion to?
Okay, so before y'all motion, I will have to travel there to go pick it up. And so I just wanted to make sure that that would be covered in the motion, that people could travel there and back. It's, I want to say like Midland area or somewhere over there, so what I plan on doing is leaving at the church on a Sunday, drive it, spend the night, pick it up Monday, and bring it back.
Okay.
And you need to include your mileage, too.
Right, and so actually, probably will wrangle my lovely husband to drive and pull a trailer behind his truck to Logan, so I may need to be borrowing one of our trailer. I know that trailer's kind of big, but I think she said it's like five feet long, so it's a pretty big machine.
We've got a heavy post trailer.
Right, so I use these as that one, or Commissioner, Pearson has one over there, too.
Now, is there a motion to approve the purchase of this printer per dollar and to approve paying mileage for Susan's trip?
I'll say it.
Alright, any further discussion?
Was this, what do you think? Was this going to your inventory?
I haven't seen this yet. I don't really think I've got this machine. I don't know how much cost it's going to be to maintain it. Before we get to work on it, I'm just going to send it out.
We'll have fun.
Computer, but I have no idea anything about that either.
Who's inventory, will it be going to, will it be going to Scott's inventory?
You can put it in my inventory. I mean, I'll handle it. I'm pretty much handling the stuff I've got now, you know. I mean, at one point.
You don't have any printers in your inventory, if they're relevant here, that's why, why I'm asking.
Yeah, at one point, Virgil actually had talked about, when he had to come down there and piece his together, and we had to go down there and help him. Said, we have got to get a larger printer, tell him what the present district has. Figured for a dollar, we would, I mean, probably afford some ink, and if we have to have it worked on, we can probably get that done.
If it's cost too much to have it worked on, we'll just scrap it because it's real start with it.
Yeah.
And we'll take it out to the scrap building.
Ah, great, but I also think it'll be in, in, under the responsibility of I T department.
Yeah, that's fine with me, yeah.
I mean, he oversees all of our other printers.
I think we should know what it is.
Well, you just look at it, like Virgil said, if it's something that's not feasible, we, we just lost a dollar and a little bit of mileage. So, but I wanted you to have oversee over.
Well, I mean, anytime, if a copier's down or anything, we don't go through Scott. We actually have to call Rico or whoever, so I, I was thinking I would do the same on that. It's forced out, it would be in my budget, so I would have to make sure I had the money.
That's fine, too. She has the budget for that sort of thing. I didn't know that.
Once, once we get it on site, then we can work on bringing a company to maintain it for us, is what I think. It's the best. So, motion was made. Second, any further discussion? If not, all's in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion passes. Item number twenty-four, discuss and consider approving equipment and furniture donated by Winning Strategies Marketing. You have a list of thirty-three items, which consists of over a hundred, pretty much over a hundred items, that winning Uh that uh Winning Strategies Marketing has closed their doors. They're no longer in business. And they are giving us the, all the furniture that we want out of there. And we have made three trips so far and probably do some more in the future. So these are the items that we have uh obtained so far and they are sitting. Most of them are sitting in the uh, on the fourth floor or over in the JP two hallway. Uh until we get approved to to use them. So any discussion? Or uh is there a motion to accept this equipment from uh Winning Strategies Marketing?
Do we have a? An email or anything from them?
I can get one. Okay, because it's just, it's been kind of piecemeal. So that, and they don't actually know what they're donating because they just let me in the building to take stuff. And so we, the list is ours that we compiled. And so the intent is to provide them with uh the list. Once we complete that, I'm telling them, thanks.
Some of these bridge radar and things like that, is it gonna be a county number attached to it?
No, you you only put county numbers on assets of a certain value. And these technically don't have a value. Sandy would have to answer that. Oh, there she is. Don't we put assets only on certain value item? So, so no, they won't need tags.
Did any of this replace any of this stuff we need to come up with?
Well, what we will do is uh uh consolidate all of this place, stuff that it replaces that is no longer useful for us. And then have a another list on agenda item to approve the salvage or the uh. Uh eliminating those items. Okay, any further discussion?
The uh, uh Virgil, they they don't have a tag on it, but it's still county property.
That's what I say. I I've got a chair that's worth ten dollars after county board's got a county tag on it.
I believe that's the way it was done in the past, but it's, I mean, we still have a process we have to go through to get rid of. Of anything that's worth five dollars. You have to, you have to get permission through the court to get rid of, so.
So we'll write all that stuff that we, we'll consolidate old stuff and uh and do a list to uh prove this position.
I make a motion, we accept this list as printed at this time.
All right, motions by Commissioner Pearson is a second.
I'll second.
All right, motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed like sign. Motion passes. Item number twenty-five, discuss consider approve the signing of a detailed design review form. D C P is O one oh seven dash F zero seven by L three Harris.
And so Paris on the paperwork, you gotta know that order. If you install it, we kind of designed it, we installed it, got operation, I realized we don't have a piece of paper to sign it anymore. So this is more or less just to check off verify that everything was installed. And that's working. We got notes on items that have not been done with. You read the notes and see that they come back and it's from the rest of the system, we're gonna get those hours up.
Or or it says, in essence, ratifying what we've already done, correct?
Essentially, yes.
Okay.
And the committee just already approved what started it now?
Uh well, I'll tell you, I I would like to have a uh Mr. Black uh on. On some kind of recording since he's helping us with all this. Uh verify, uh him verify that all this has been done, cause he's the one watching over all this stuff.
Mr. Black actually did. When I married, sent over, sent Mr. Black, he went through, reviewed it. We didn't send it back there for them to review and be aware of and re-sign the documents in the back.
Okay, that and that's, that's probably why we didn't, weren't able to approve it last time, cause we were getting it approved, right?
Help me out. Is there something on there approved through Mr. Black? So we'll have. If something is not here, we'll have Mr. Black responsible for this not being there?
But he's part of the committee. So uh, did you make a motion?
All right. And uh motion been made and second, is there any further discussion? Uh all those in favor say aye, opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twenty-six, discuss consider entering into a three-year contract with Lantana Communications for a cloud-based phone system for the sheriff's office. Okay, I believe that would be Scott.
Yes, sir. Really, I I planned on bringing this for everybody uh in the budget coming up. I was gonna plan on doing this next year. Some issue with uh Sheriff's Office phone system, though, we need to move there's up. And uh discussed this with y'all. Um got this quote from Lantana, it's a eight by, that's the brand. Change them over from where everything's local in there and and that stuff is on the desktop probably is. Around two thousand, two thousand two, somewhere in there. Kind of like the voting.
Right.
It's time, move on. Um there's gonna, with this plan, there is a upfront cost of. Uh five thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, which I will take out of my five seventy-two line item. Uh in lieu of a server that I was gonna buy for him, which they need this phone system more, so we're gonna do that at this time. The monthly recurring cost of one thousand fourteen dollars. Is almost a wash when you consider that we're gonna be doing away with the um hard lines. That we go get from Frontier. So the difference is a hundred and seventy dollars. It'll be a hundred and seventy dollars more per month for this system. Once we get into. Uh phone lines, this connected.
Okay.
But for the the services that this phone system will give us. I I believe it's definitely worth for the.
How many hard lines do we have right now?
Well, we have a PRI and we have three hard lines. Um and the total of those. I made a note, I thought it was, oh, uh eight hundred and forty-five, eight hundred and forty-five dollars.
Now, what phone equipment is required?
There's gonna be.
Are they using any of our phones?
No, there'll be twenty-seven Polycom phones. Uh Captain Williams identified. There you are. Captain Williams identified the ones that would need physical phones. There's a lot of people that won't. They'll just use. A phone that is basically run off an app on their computer.
Okay.
Those are a lot cheaper than the physical phones in the current. That's one of the reasons we went over. We were pretty much out of wash and then we decided that we had to have physical phones for dispatch and that's what price to the one seventy. They'll have.
Will this have any effect on the uh commissary uh service?
No, this is completely separate. This is only for.
Okay, they have their own internet connections on, okay.
Are the Frontier phones, they're not cloud-based now?
No, sir, they have a, it's all local. Old uh appliances in there. The digital system. We've had it fail twice so far this year.
So and our current, we've been using our current internet service, correct?
It's it's ample for this purpose. We've already done the research on that.
And this is for dispatch too? For dispatch, we use a new.
For all dispatch admin.
Okay.
Deputy side, the book in verse.
Okay. All right.
Now, I believe it includes the five that were E O C. That rely on standard, I can see, I think we still have that anyway. But those are part of the Virgil ones. But they were still listed as.
Okay, any further discussion? Is there a motion to approve this uh three-year contract with Lantana? Okay, is there a second? Well, I'll second it. So uh any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, all opposed like sign, motion passes. Uh number twenty-seven, discuss consider exemption to the bidding requirement for hot water heaters for Vennant County Jail. Uh for those not in it. The jail has two industrial water heaters. That are used to uh provide hot water for the inmates and. The sheriff came to work one morning and both of them were were not working properly. And uh it's, it, and uh we were able to get Tim and Sons Plumbing out there. And they researched it and realized that they were, they had not been properly maintained over the years. These two were installed in two thousand fifteen at a cost of forty thousand dollars. And uh we were able to find replacements, or Tim and Sons was able to find them in in Jasper. And uh were able to get it and they had the new heaters delivered and installed. And and just about twenty-four hours from the time it went out, which we're, we're in literal hot water with the jail standards if we don't have hot water. And so they got it done and got it taken care of, but in the process, we had to go ahead and pay for the hot water heaters. Without going out, it's over fifty thousand dollars. Uh in in that regard, we were not able to go out for a competitive bid on those because of the emergency situation. So what we are doing here is we are granting the exemption to the bidding on these uh hot water heaters and the installation. Uh to comply with the uh bidding process or the exemption. Right, right. So. And then the uh, you've got the resolution there in your books. It says, the commissioner's court grants an exemption to the competitive bidding requirement. All under L G C two six seven dot zero two four. Uh three, for the purchase of hot water heaters at the Vennant County Jail for the unforeseen damage to. Uh to a public property of Vennant County, and that is the reason why we could do this. It's the unforeseen damage. So is there a motion to accept this resolution? Is there a second?
Second period.
Motion has been made, second, and any further discussion?
Well, actually, we're ratifying it. We, we've already purchased it.
Right, well, we're we're approving the exemption to the bidding process and and it is in arrears, yes, so. Okay, so any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, all opposed like sign. Motion passes, okay, and I just wanna say that Tim and Sons did an incredible job getting it done. Cause not only, when the new, new heaters came in, they installed ones and uh it was, it was leaking. There was a defective part in it and they were able to get, they contacted the manufacturer, got the manufacturer to deliver another one. And they installed it too and uh, we had them build a manufacturer for the second installation, okay? All right, item number twenty-seven, no, I was, I was twenty-seven. Number twenty-eight, discuss consider sheriff office salaries. Okay, sheriff, you're up.
Judge, freshers, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. Back to you. Talk about money again, salaries. Uh here to request assistance with salary increases for the deputies for Vennant County Sheriff's Office this morning. I was sworn in sheriff back in May, I think actually, I think I reached ten months today. Back in May, sworn in, completed ten months in office. This time has given me an opportunity to learn some, sure, something about the sheriff's office employees, operations, jail and budget. We have some very dedicated employees in our operations that strive to do the best of any available resources we have, folks out here. They stay pretty busy. There we have the most, the area I had the most concern about this time. Is staffing. During this time, I had the most concern about this uh staffing for the sheriff's office for our sworn law enforcement personnel. Because minimal staffing, we're finding it harder to provide the level of service to our community, they expect and deserve. Due to the minimal staffing, I'm also concerned for our officer safety. Some of the calls are, on to require additional officers to be able to see, we can't just send one officer out there. We have to send two. It's sometimes these things take, it may take an hour, two or three before we get things sorted out up there before they could leave to continue on answering other calls. Many times we have to depend on other law enforcement agencies to assist us with answering calls from circus in the county. They'll come out of their cities. And not just city police departments, this is also the constables, they'll leave what they're doing, the highway patrol. They all have the fire marshals, they all have them. Many times these other law enforcement agencies will lead your, their cities, work their responsibilities and go out and counter calls. They also back our deputies up consistently. It's on a daily basis that happens. We're thankful for the support of the H, we have our county consistently provide our deputies with that and we'd, we'd really be uh, be short handed. Currently, we are budgeted for fourteen patrol deputies, which includes all our sergeants, the sergeants, patrol sergeants. As of today, we have five deputies, let me clarify, those five deputies we have, those are deputies, including sergeants. That we can put on the street in a one-man unit and send them out here to go answer calls, if that makes sense. They're, they're ready to go, have units ready to go. One of the deputies will be, one of those deputies will be moving over to a transport deputy position as soon as it's possible, as soon as we get enough coverage we can. We've been short transport deputy positions since mid-November to assist with transport prisoners around. Since I started here last May, we never had more than two patrol deputies on patrol shift to carry the entire county. Two than the complement of deputies we've had on one time. We're budgeted to have three patrol deputies per shift when there are any sort of employee enough deputy. Also, since May, we've had five patrol deputies. One CID sergeant and one courthouse deputy, a total of seven, resigned to set positions at other A C's, other places at higher pay. With less call, call volume and responsibilities. Since October, we've been having to pull our CID investigators and command staff in regular duties to help cover patrol shifts. So those two deputies we have, we're having to pull CID investigators off of what they're working on. Command staff off of what they're working on and having them sit here and answer calls. We currently have four deputies in training, so in addition to the five, there are four that are in training. They, we can't turn them out there on, they have to be an experienced officer. Of these four, two were not released to the field or two will not be released from field training until July twenty twenty-three, so it's gonna be July. Before those two of those officers are in training, will be able to take a unit on their own and go out here and answer calls. During this time, they must be prepared for experienced officers cannot patrol by themselves. We have some brigade officers working for us that we have right now and uh who have been with us for a little while and. We have some pretty motivated individuals to do a great job for us. We've also had numerous good deputies leading employment here over the last few years. I've been associated with this county in law enforcement from back in late eighties and early nineties. Has always been home, then when I came back here in two thousand seventeen, started back work again. We've had several good deputies that worked here, but have left employment here and moved on to other places to work. And several have worked in this county for other A Cs. That, uh, at higher salaries. This morning, Canton Police Department, I, when I sent this email to you last night, I had three on to make sure my number was correct. Actually, I will need to correct this. This morning, Canton Police Department currently has four officers on patrol. Just decided to see them as Canton. This morning, we have two deputies on patrol for our county. At the ready attrition, we may not be able to maintain two deputies on patrol to cover the eight hundred square miles. I've lost three deputies in the last month. Three patrol deputies left and all went to higher paying jobs. This is not providing adequate law enforcement services in citizens of Vennant County. I won't say at the time that I've been in office that they'll have had your full support. And our mission to get our sheriff's office to level, we'd all like for it to be, and I appreciate that. You know, I've been very supportive of everything we've come up with. Anytime I come to you. Send over to help us and I appreciate it. I know the budget's limited, but I've come to you today with this request and after your consideration, helping us hire and retain the best deputies and boys we can find. The current rate of pay for a peace officer is not sufficient to attract and retain enough qualified people to apply for these jobs. I'll be glad to answer your questions.
Okay, let me do my part.
Yes, thank you.
And, uh, we divide this in in the parts. I'm doing the financial side of it, uh, and the recommendation, what we've got. Uh, and you have that in the sheet, uh, actually, it was, I emailed to you last night. There's our twenty-nine positions in the sheriff's department that require peace or peace officer or law enforcement. And, uh, you, you have the list there and all of the, all the deputies. The current salary is thirty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents a year, thirty-nine thousand. Nine hundred and fifty-nine. And again, you can, um, the issue is having to. Uh, compete against the, uh, areas, the surrounding areas for that. So, uh, what we did, the total salary for those twenty-nine or for the, for the sheriff's office. Uh, budget, uh, is so far for twenty twenty-three, two million, six hundred and fourteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars. Two million, six hundred and fourteen. We have spent, uh, of the, of the, through the, the ten payroll periods that we've had. We have spent one million, uh, five thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars. That's making the, uh, the actual spent, or I'm sorry, the budget for ten pay periods would have been one million, five, five thousand, seven hundred. What we actually spent, the actual versus eight hundred and eighty thou, eight hundred and eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-five. Meaning we are one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Under budget in the salaries. And the reason we're under budget is because we haven't filled positions and we haven't been able to get people on board. And so what, uh, what the proposal. That we're coming to the Commissioner's Court with is to raise these twenty-nine positions to, uh, ten thousand dollars. From what their current rate is. Okay, uh, so that would make a deputy, uh, uh. Well, actually, they already got five thousand at the beginning of this year, okay? And then the additional ten thousand would take them to. Uh, fifty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars a year for the patrol deputies. Okay, fifty, but roughly fifty-four thousand. Okay, that is what we're doing. Now, raising them, because it's halfway through the year, we would only be, uh, incur half the cost or five thousand. And the total cost for the next six months to the end of our fiscal year. Would be one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy. Now, if you remember, we had one hundred and ninety-seven thousand surplus. Okay, so if we filled all these positions. And paid them this additional ten thousand dollars. The, the increase would be a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars. We gotta add in the certificate pay that we got approved, uh, prior in, uh, last month, and that was forty-four thousand. So the net effect is we would be over budget by seventeen thousand, uh. Three hundred and fifty-eight dollars, uh, in that regard. That would be if we filled all these positions. And according to this chart right here, we have ten vacancies at the moment. Okay, and I, that, it fluctuates back and forth, but we're having ten and, uh. And the likelihood of being able to fill all ten in the next six months is very lit, small, very small. So. This adjustment right here would not require a budget adjustment for the rest of the year. Because we would be within, within the range, uh, assuming that we don't fill all the positions. In that regard. So the proposal that, that we're looking at is to, uh, give an increase to these twenty-nine positions of ten thousand dollars a year. That is the proposal. So, uh. I'm not gonna ask for a motion. I think we should keep consid, considering it and, or, or keep discussing it before we actually do a motion. So. Questions, comments?
Um, Joe, in our society today. There's not a whole lot. Young men, young women that pursue a law enforcement career.
No, just, you're just not. Used to have a standing line.
That's the, and because of the society we live in now. All the academies are down, that police department academy is down, uh. And, and. They're trying their best to track off, I know Kaufman did a special where they were, uh, asking. Peace officers from other counties to come and give them a bonus. What was it, ten thousand or fifteen thousand dollar bonus?
They'd go for fifty-five thousand, sixty-five thousand dollars a year if he had five years of experience, but he worked for his peace officer. But he's still having trouble getting people to the talk to him this week.
And, and I, I talked to, uh, Judge Wade over in Henderson County, uh, here. Couple of weeks ago, they, they had the same problem over there. They, they start their deputies out at fifty-four thousand a year and they can't fill. I don't know that we can salary our way out of this. You know what, you know what I'm talking about?
You, you can't. It would sour your way into getting more people, but you can sour your way to keep what you've got. Because there's, there's incentives for them to, if they're money motivated, to move elsewhere. I have. I have here, I spent some time last night up on Indeed. If you don't know what Indeed is, it's an online, uh, service, dial posters. Okay, and I've got ten here. I've got a police officer in Fornie I S D. The salary is sixty-three thousand to eighty-two thousand. Uh, a police sergeant, Fornie I S D, seventy-three thousand to ninety-nine thousand. Police officer in, uh, City of Fornie, sixty-three thousand, six sixty-two a year. Police officer, City of Sashen, and I looked that up, I said, it is an hour and fifteen minutes away. But it's sixty-seven thousand to eighty-five thousand a year. Again, the high end is if they got ten years of experience or more, you get paid that. City of Mesquite, uh, police officer, sixty-eight thousand to ninety-one thousand dollars a year. Uh, Sigaville, City Hall, police officer, fifty-seven thousand, one forty-two a year. That was the lowest one of all. Uh, City, no, I'm sorry, next one is. City of Kaufman has three police officers, fifty-two thousand, nine twenty. And then the town of Sunnyvale is looking for a certified police officer for sixty-two thousand, one sixty-nine. So those are the ones I got off of Indeed. Then I, there were two websites that I went to. Uh, City of Granville, I'm not even gonna talk about that one on here, but, uh, the Tyler, Texas. Has a whole listing. Anybody go up there and look at it. A police recruit entry level is sixty thousand dollars, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. I'll just skip all, they got each, each year, our, our salary, uh, police officer of eleven years is at seventy-four thousand. Four hundred and ninety-six. And, uh, police sergeant is at eighty-nine thousand. So what I'm trying to say is. We're trying to raise the salary to keep from losing who we have right now. Okay, for, with the rates that we have now, it, it, there is incentive for them. Where they can get ten to twenty thousand dollars more, even more. And it's not that far to Tyler, it's not that far to Kaufman and the other ones are traveling, so, uh. If nothing else, we're just trying to maintain what we've got and, and hope, hope for additional people to apply. Uh, what we're ending up, going to end up doing, and, uh, even with the, with the rate, no matter what rate we have. Is we will be the training ground. For the officers that will be moving to Fornie, to Kaufman and to Tyler. But we have to deal with that, okay? Uh, you know, hopefully, well, you know, we can offer them incentives about the quality of life in Vennant County that they want to stay here. And that's, uh, part of what the sheriff's doing, he's trying to upgrade the, uh, image and the quality of the, the sheriff's office. And this is one of the things that we can do to help them in that regard, so.
Where did the police officers that left, where did they go to?
The last three that I had leave, uh, one of our starts, it's went to Smith County to work in jail. He was a patrol sergeant for us. He could go to the Smith County, work in jail, he was a pay raise for him. I think he walked in to get uniforms. I took one look at it and I think they've already put him over. And with a gun belt on, but he worked as a deputy, so in there in the courthouse. Will he get another pay raise before he even sit, put in jail? He could clean, snatch him up, we hated losing. Uh, one of them is our fire marshal, our deputy fire marshal here now. Stacy Boyett, I think it's a five thousand dollar year pay raise. He left us as patrol officer to go work over at Fire Marshal's office. Uh, the other young man that left, the most recent one, he left to go back, he's gonna carry, he was doing this before. He carried a reserve commission or a. I don't know, either part-time and full-time, or, or non-paid, paid, it's way T cold. Mission, uh, person you'd ask him, care what back they did. It was full-time and reserved after, and now they're doing it full-time and. Paid, paid, no, I can't get this right. Paid or unpaid is the way they list your permission now. He's carrying unpaid commission through Hopco Police Department. Which is one of the, uh, one of the fingers like, uh, here like walking. He's carrying reserve commission to them, he'd be working traffic construction. He sits in a vehicle and minimum like forty-five dollars an hour to about seventy, depending on how, what area. He goes working closely with metropolitan areas, they pay more to sit there in the vehicle. And here, seeing what's a deputy making about twenty. Yes, ma'am. Nineteen sixty-six an hour. He goes sit in his vehicle, make forty-five dollars an hour, watching that list.
So the, the concern I have is for the citizens of our county and having adequate response time. And, and we're already shorthanded. In the office, the people in the office are having to cover for the lack of patrol deputies. And at some point in time, they're gonna say enough's enough. And, and we, we, we need to. We need to do something, or we're not gonna be able to provide the functions of the sheriff's department as. People expect. That's the bottom line.
Another one, Canton Police Department, I raised here, we're our sergeants. Less calls, more money. I think it's about three calls and I have no period, he's getting about three calls an hour, so. Um, another one, the, kind of police department, we lived here, went to Fornie School District, he retired before, he was here at courthouse for about a year when I worked here. And, uh, he, by the way, in the work school district, they get about two months off in summertime, so. Yeah, he was supposed to at least take a walk in the park on the Sunday.
The Canton I S D is now up to four.
Oh, he felt retired Howard from the work here at the courthouse.
Yeah.
He went down the street, Canton Police Department, like, when he left here, seven thousand dollars a year more, he drove down the street after. Richard, I agree with you, money's not the fix to this. If you ask me, is this gonna fix this? No, sir, it's not gonna fix it. Will it help it? I think it'll help it. Is it gonna be the total fixing this? No, I don't believe it will. But.
You got two and you've got the city of Canton, you know, they, they have more revenue.
Yes.
They have a lot more revenue than if you look at their revenue compared to the size. Whereas, you know, Vennant County. We've always been an agriculture community.
Yes.
As a matter of fact, if you go down to the appraisal district and, and check out. Uh, who is got an ag exempt, you'll find about ninety percent, ninety-five percent of the honey cooperated area is on an ag exempt. So, you know, that, that's less revenue that we bring.
Yes.
We mostly rely on, on new revenue.
Yes.
That, that comes in, and I don't know. I don't know that, that, uh, eventually, uh, we, we may have to go over the recent. Limitation that we, we have now, uh, as far as a tax rate and, and raise it, go out to the citizens for. For a tax.
That's exactly what's time, is time to do that. We, we, we don't, we don't currently, we don't have the, the, the finances to. I mean, even if, if we do this, you're still under, you're still way under, you're still gonna leave to go. Soon as they get trained, they're gonna leave.
Yes.
Uh, but, but it's time to go to the, it's time for us to go above that three percent increase. That by law, we cannot do that without the voters' approval. Uh, we need to go above that three percent increase and, and tell the voters it's for salaries. Uh, uh, we're, we've got a big issue out there. Soon as we fix that, if we do this, we're gonna, we're gonna create another issue. With all of our other employees in county, uh, because the, they're underpaid too. There's not a, they're not a county, there's not a county employee in Vennant County that's not underpaid.
Yes.
I'll tell you that right now. Uh, none, none of them are up to. Uh, uh, part of what the surrounding counties give.
Yes, including elected officials too. I think we're all on the same page. That's we wanna make things better here in all fields. The sheriff's office where I'm, I'm at.
My biggest concern, Joe, is doing it now, if you think they're leaving now. When no, when, uh, uh, next year comes here and we don't have the money to continue this, but I don't believe it will. If we give any kind of raises and are at an expense, we're gonna have to turn around and take it back. If they're leaving now, we take some of this money back.
Yes, sir, I'd never want to give anything we have.
Couldn't do that, we couldn't give it and take it back.
I'm sent on board with that.
And that brings us to. Were the real big problem coming in, yeah, it'd be really easy to give it right now and money and such that. But we gotta look at that in next year's budget, budget after that, and a budget after that, and that, that's where it becomes a problem. For those who don't know, Canton, for eight years, eight years, we do not get raises. So if you figure somebody worked eight years without any kind of different raise. That it, it's not a standard three percent cost delivery, they're twenty-four percent behind on pay scale.
Yes.
And it's countywide. And the last few years, we've worked hard and tried to, to give decent raises.
Yes, sir, yeah.
That even seen worse go down by now.
I'm glad you brought that up, it's a part of why we're, where we're at right now.
And so this brings us to where I'm talking about with budget involved. Right now, money is set, that's the cause. We didn't have the employees to give to. So we could easily take, give what we got, be good. But if your intent is to try to fill these spots, then next year's budget, we gotta plan for that money. And, and based on the last year's budgetary figures and what we used to give the rate we gave last year. If we give you this phrase now and we gotta carry it then, we're not gonna be able to give anybody else in the county more than six hundred dollars each year. All gonna be up there. While your people are setting out with what will be the equivalent of nineteen thousand dollar raise this year. Plus, if you're doing it, if you're trying to keep up, you're trying to meet up with people that just went to ten thousand more. When you get there, the people are gonna try to jump up and meet us, and you're about turning it up five next year to describe they, they competitive on top of that. So there's thirty people you got on this list here. That's gonna wind up. Getting a five thousand dollar raise next year and a nineteen thousand dollars issue while the rest of the county. I've got a three thousand this year and a six hundred next year. That's gonna create more problems even in your department, because your jail is near, dispatch will fall under that. Not about a mass accident or morale killer. It's just, it's, it's not feasible. I, I agree, we need to do something. I agree, we need to get the pay up. This ain't gonna work.
So what's the solution?
Well, I, I think we keep working on this. It's, it's definitely something we've gotta, we've gotta put our thinking caps on and do. And, and like I say, if you can, if you can hang on, I think we need to, I think we need to send it to the voters. I, I've, I've got a lot of people out there in that audience. I can see them shaking their head that they agree that we've gotta do something. And, uh, and I think when I said we, you say we've got money in the bank, we do have money in banks, you can't take money that we've got in the bank to. To pay on, on re- reoccurring costs. Because eventually, very soon, this kind of money, the money in the bank will be gone, then how you gonna think? So we've gotta figure out a way. Nobody wants to pay more taxes. But I think if you let the voters of Vennant County know that these taxes are going up. Your taxes are gonna go up to, to, to pay for salaries. And the majority of those salaries is at the sheriff's office to give us protection. I believe they'll understand itself. I, I, I'm not, I'm, don't, please don't think I'm.
No, our, our goals are all the same.
It knows we've got. Right here, it knows we've got a problem.
Yes, and I appreciate that. Our goals were all something here. We hit the ground and get there.
Yes.
Okay, so you just want uh no action on this item, but do you wanna schedule a workshop to discuss it again or?
I think we need to start discussing this in budget here.
Okay.
And and I think we're gonna be able to do something, Joe, but I think we need to get to the budget here and see what we've got and see what we're gonna go with.
I think we need y'all's help, helping that audience to tell people.
The issue, it's not just a money issue.
But yet. We need y'all's help to spread the word and the situation we're in. And 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 that's, I think that's what we need to do. Us, us five, we start promoting it out there, telling the people what type of, you know, what the situation we're in. And because I guarantee you, we cannot be at Kaufman and Smith County. I promise, we cannot be. At at our current, what we're doing right now.
People said in the past.
And we're not trying to.
We're not trying to. I would rather live here.
Yes.
For me, I wanna be a peace officer, I'd rather be here and make it work more traction, it's just not worth it. Driving to Dallas or to Kaufman County or Smith County, wherever they stay here. They stay here and work for us, long-term work for us, not for six months or a year till the next big pay raise comes. They get their buy-in here, when we look up and we have fifteen, twenty years always working here. We're working on it. I've got one sitting over here.
Mm-hmm. Now, now, uh now I'll tell you, in my personal opinion, Joe, taking some of this excess money that where you haven't got employees right now. As an incentive to get some employees, I don't have a problem taking some of that money and using it for a. A a a higher own incentive, one-time pay. You say, you guarantee us you're gonna stay so long, we're gonna, at that time, we're gonna give you this money. That's not going into next year's month.
Yeah, it's it's any kind of additional pay is uh very touchy. That regard.
I can't be one sure, there's other, there's other counties. There's other counties doing, and law enforcement, they're doing incentives to hire them. Um I I understand it had to be researched, but I promise you, I I feel free.
County attorneys allow transfer, because I called the sheriff over there and asked them how they were paying this ten thousand dollars for the five-year-plus officer to kind of work for them. They weren't paying as lump sum out as a bonus. They paid it out.
Payed it, yeah. Over.
Payed it.
Yeah.
And we're open for suggestions. Maybe like we can get any ideas, suggestions on how to do this.
So.
We're open.
At at the moment, y'all now understand the situation we're in, and so now we can start uh. Keep our eyes open for opportunities.
I think we all know the situation.
Well.
I did.
County know the public, it knows the situation.
Yeah, that's that's where we're at.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All right, we'll move on with no action. Item number twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Joe.
Uh is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, move here.
We're saying.
Okay.
All right, motion made, second to adjourn all the papers say aye.
Aye.
I suppose like time. All right, we have a workshop scheduled, start in fifteen minutes. Where we will discuss subdivision guidelines. Thank you. Thank all of y'all for staying and listening to us, so.
That one missed the dial.
Yeah.
Yeah, March twenty-third.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. March twenty-third.
Okay, we're done. Oh, good, okay.
And. What you taking to the. Uh no, I've got.
I gotta change. Sorry.
I haven't scheduled anything. I don't understand.
But I didn't get to sign.
Pretty tough.
Yeah. Sorry.
I'll see you.
Okay.
See you.
No.
Were you singing last time?
I had no, I had no I wanna.
I did. Had to make sure up there so I didn't get left in the end of January.
Randy, Mr. Roberts, how are you? Congratulations.
Thank you. I wrote it down. To adjourn was Virgil. Second.
Question.
Yes, sir. There's, there's, well, it's grant money is going to a little more, but uh there's no strings, but it's saying, asking. Or the document wants me to sign is saying that we comply with these things that I don't know what they are. And before, before I sign and say we're gonna do it, I wanna uh identify them and.
Well, good. See, that angle will know what's the man on stage, even if you do not.
Yeah. Yeah, cuz I just got it Friday and it's like, or Thursday, and I don't have time to mess with it to uh.
Yes, the guy, it's a document. If possible, they have a certain type of a noise, they have a problem about county needs.
You got, we got.
One, we were told.
Well, it's a decimal that you've got to really have like a big fan before you do that. Yeah.
Okay, God.
They got, they they have these little instruments, it's a decimal reading, they hold up and you go over a certain, I don't know what the decimal is, but then they go in.
And it was as far as they will be road signs next door, moving.
We don't have an audience, and I'm not sure that we can create one. I'm thinking the ledger though can make it create one. We have, I miss, I've talked to this uh. Bill's wife uh. Yeah, and she's having the same problem out there uh where she lives, with people next door. Play music all night long.
You said that.
You know, in their pockets.
I'm really doing that bit on a good day. I mean, we drove around all.
Thank you. Yeah, I listen.
You know what? Oh, what, where do I find that? It's like, I think it was Susan. What to.
Yeah.
The noise or that?
Well, it's the state, it's not ours.
Oh, it's state, regulate, okay. Thank you, God. No, we don't, I turned that tomorrow after the uh. I said, no, no. Uh we don't need, do we need tomorrow's recording? Do you want tomorrow's recording?
It's a workshop or whatever you do on workshops. I don't know what, do you record workshops? I don't know, I don't think you do.
Not always.
There, no, there's a, there's one for tomorrow.
Yeah, there isn't a.
There's a separate.
They don't put the YouTube link on there.
Okay.
The YouTube links on there, I have to have it on.
Okay.
Workshop, I don't think it'll be on YouTube.
I I wouldn't think a workshop needs to be all all recorded and everything.
As you say, I don't think it should be.
Because first of all, nothing's voted on in there, it's just a discussion.
Sometimes we might have. People come into a workshop, they're like. And it's no agents.